...call meeting of the Campbell County Commission is called to an end. We will begin with a prayer led by Rusty Orton, followed by a pledge to the American flag led by Johnny Bruce.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this good day and the blessings in our life for watching over us another day with Jesus. Heavenly Father, give us knowledge and understanding to make the best decisions, dear Heavenly Father, for our county, dear Jesus, our citizens. Heavenly Father, walk with us, talk with us, teach guidance and direction, dear Heavenly Father. Bless our children and our families, bless our first responders and our soldiers who sit on the floor. Thank you for all that you do in our life, but most of all, Lord, for the planet's salvation. Amen.
May it send a place and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
How secretary please call.
David Atkins.
Present.
Charles Bayer.
Here.
Wayne Bayer.
Here.
Johnny Bruce. Michael Douglas.
Here.
Wayne Gibson.
Here.
Beverly Hall.
Here.
Tyler King.
Here.
Wayne Kids.
Here.
Scotty Kids.
Here.
Zachary Marlowe.
Here.
Zune Anne.
Here.
Rusty Orton.
Here.
Derek Sharp. Scott Stankill.
The words for 14 present. First item on the agenda is to accept nominations for the election of a County Commission Chair. The floor is now open for nomination.
Your Honor, I'd like to nominate Johnny Bruce to Service Chair for the Commission for this coming term.
Second Chairman. Second.
Is there any other nominations? I got one question. Mayor, would you like to be Chair or set up? Is there any other nominations? Mr. Chairman, I make the motion nomination seat for Mr. Bruce to be Chair by actual election.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Bruce is the only nominee.
David Atkins.
Yes.
Charles Bayer.
Yes.
Wayne Bayer.
Yes.
Johnny Bruce.
Yes.
Michael Douglas.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Tyler King.
Yes.
Wayne Kids.
Yes.
Scotty Kids.
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe.
Yes.
Zune Anne.
Yes.
Rusty Orton.
Yes.
Derek Sharp is absent, Scott Stankill.
Yes.
Fourteen one absent. I turn the lady over to the Chair.
Guys, I want to thank you for the vote. Hope I do a good job for you. I promise you I'll try to do my best. Before we get started, the Vice Chair, I'd like to change things up a little bit if it's okay with you all, that the Mayor said here, you know, the remainder of the year. That's okay with everyone?
Okay, next order business is to elect a Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to put the Mayor as Vice Chairman.
A motion that, on board. The reason thing is because the absence of the Chair of the Committee is not acting here in the House.
And I will be exact of when.
Yes, can't have.
Okay.
Can't have.
All right.
I'll entertain a motion. Nominate?
I'll make Rusty Orton the Vice Chair.
Has a nomination for Rusty Orton?
Second.
Second. Mike Douglas. Any other nominees? Sign up. I need a motion to. Scott Stankill makes the motion to.
Set present.
Roll call, please.
I have that second.
Uh, Mike Douglas.
David Atkins.
Yes.
Charles Bayer.
Yes.
Wayne Bayer.
Yes.
Johnny Bruce.
Yes.
Michael Douglas.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Tyler King.
Yes.
Wayne Kids.
Yes.
Scotty Kids.
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe.
Yes.
Zune Anne.
Yes.
Rusty Orton.
Yes.
Derek Sharp is absent, Scott Stankill.
Yes.
Fourteen one absent.
I'd like to state that that motion has passed. Congratulations, Mr. Orton. Don't miss.
Don't miss. I'm doing my best. Before we get started. To ask the Commissioners to get together in their districts, I'd like to go ahead and put together the Sanitation Committee tonight, and it's my understanding, Joe, we can do so.
So if you don't care, we can pick in your district for just a few minutes and then we'll come back and I'll ask for nominees.
One. Really?
We don't deserve a Chair. We don't need a Chair.
They'll do that later. You're fine, I'm okay with that. I'll support that.
You got it, you got this.
You okay with that, Beverly?
You're fast.
Good deal. I don't.
You got the excuse. Yes.
Thank you, Beverly.
Sure, no problem. Well, it's back down to normal now. Three of them. That'll do it.
Yeah, yeah. They want to do this. I agree.
You getting late, didn't you?
I did.
So you don't have to be on the beer party. Or no, you have to be.
I meant to tell them that.
First District, who do you guys nominate? David Atkins.
Right here.
Over here.
Read you get that? Second District.
Wayne Kids.
Wayne Kids?
Yeah.
Okay. Third District.
Wayne Bayer.
Wayne Bayer. Fourth District. Go Bayer. It's weird, boys. Fifth District. Mike Douglas. Mike Douglas.
Do you need a motion to approve that, Chairman?
We do again, please.
How about Atkins? Kids? David Bayer? Go Bayer? And Douglas?
Wayne.
Wayne Bayer.
Wayne.
Yeah.
And you better specify.
Game's up. I agree with that very much. Yes, you've got to say Wayne Kids.
Oh, definitely, please do.
Three Duanes.
He's chucky.
Got it.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this committee.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion to approve the committee as presented.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, Orton, second to the Kids to approve the committee as presented. Roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Charles Bayer.
Yes.
Wayne Bayer.
Yes.
Johnny Bruce.
Yes.
Michael Douglas.
Yes.
Wayne Gibson.
Yes.
Beverly Hall.
Yes.
Tyler King.
Yes.
Wayne Kids.
Yes.
Scotty Kids.
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe.
Yes.
Zune Anne.
Yes.
Rusty Orton.
Yes.
Derek Sharp is absent, Scott Stankill.
Yes.
Fourteen one absent.
Pass. That has passed.
Yes.
In saying so, guys, I'd go ahead and schedule a meeting pretty quick, because you guys can get busy. Bill did that.
The committee does.
Bill did that. Before we get started, Mr. Rupert has asked for the floor first. Once he's finished, then I will ask each Commissioner, you know, if they have any questions, and we'll go around the room and take it as you raise your hand. Bill, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start off by thanking the employees in Environmental Services. Some of them's here tonight, and I want to thank them for attending, but the task that's been asked of y'all is above and beyond the normal scope or job description at Environmental Services. I want to thank the citizens of this county, and I want them all to know of all the hard work that you guys have done. There's not been one project that's been completed in Environmental Services without our employees being involved in some form. The importance of that is that it's saved taxpayers numerous amount of money. And again, I thank you, and I'm certain the citizens of this county thank you as well. I wrote this to inform the citizens and some public officials of the condition of the Environmental Services. Some may already know, but for the people who doesn't, here are some facts. The Department has received and hauled more refuse from this facility than in the history of this department. The sanitation department closes two days a year, and we provide the citizens of this county with the service the other 363 days. We have had to endure the same things that other departments has had to endure, and done so without having major changes or having to close due to COVID, employee shortages, hard shortages, all while continuing to give the service of this county to the citizens that they deserve. Environmental Services has been able to complete projects that has truly been for the betterment of the citizens of this county. We presented the compactors to the Commission back in 2019, and have been working towards the implementation of them ever since. We have built a scale house so that the flow of tow string roadside will flow more effectively and safely for the citizens, not exposing them to the amount of equipment or trucks that we have at the facility. And we've also been able to pave the parking lot here so the accessibility of containers is easier, cleaner, and a centralized location. We installed a new gate system for tow string and installed water lines to the existing transfer station, which did not have in the past. Installed two heavy-duty compactors and chutes for the transfer station that will be able to haul about 15 tons per box. Currently, our semis are hauling an average of about 18 to 20 tons. Installing the compactors will help keep the facility cleaner and make it more effective when hauling the landfill. We've also been able to put a compactor to all of our off sites with the exception of one that we're waiting to deliver. The purpose of the compactors is to allow for more waste to be received at the facility without the need for serviceability as often. We worked with the Campbell County High School Building Trade. Mr. Atkins was able to have two new attended buildings built. They installed them at those sites because those buildings was in disrepair. New fencing was also installed at Elk Valley and Wells Springs. Cameras, security camera systems were also installed at every site. The barrier which ultimately everybody's familiar with has done some damage to a lot of the fencing, which is another reason why the compactors are more beneficial than not. The Campbell County Finance Department has been a definition of what a steward is. We've worked through some very challenging situations working with the Finance Department as a team, which is how county departments should and I believe were intended to operate. Since our administration took over in 2018, we've had to overcome adversity and still so till today. We don't want to say that this is the reason for the condition of Environmental Services, so let me just give you some facts. The transfer station was never designed to maintain the amount of waste that's having to maintain. Equipment at our facility, we'll say it like this, we physically pulled trailers, dozers, bomb cats, and a roll-off truck out of the weeds that was waiting to be surplus, but we was able to pull them out and refurbish them and get them offable. Last year, we was able to purchase a backhoe, which has been a saving grace. Many may not know that we had a high lift front in loader, which is how we loaded our semi trucks to haul it to the landfill, but may not know that we had a fire to the high lift causing damage and causing it to malfunction because of the brush fire that was a result of either an act of God or intentionally set that happened around 10:00 PM back in January. This backhoe has been having to perform a job which it was never designed to perform. We do not use the incinerator at night, we cannot speak for his past administration, but we're following the guidelines set by the State, and are certified in smoke school. Myself and two other employees are able to read the smoke and document for the State and our records, but that has been, has to be done during the day. We've implemented a safety program here at Environmental Services, not just a quarterly one that the State requires us to have. Our department did not have job descriptions or policy and procedure in place, which myself and the Assistant Director at the time, Josh Goines, developed and installed. Our department has the only AC certified mechanic and 45th Cami who is very capable of maintaining the fleet of vehicles. Contrary to what people are being told or how the perception is, our mechanic goes above and beyond his call of duty to ensure that the trucks are safe and inoffable. The semis that hauls our trash to the landfill was purchased and were only attended to last approximately 12 months, or so the State would us, if we get a year out of them, it's worth the money. Because when our administration took over, the trucks at this facility was in disrepair. Those semis are going on three years now. Now, we have full intention of being fully functional with our compactor system by now, but again, this department has done more projects at this facility to better this facility and this department than ever before, and hauled more refuse than ever before. I believe there's a reason for that, so we'll just start at the top. Number one, the prices of those refuse commercially was a whole lot higher. We felt as collectively as a body that it would be more beneficial for the businesses of this county if we're able to drop the price. Second, the floods in 19 and 20, and then the next two, which are what I personally think, and Mr. Bruce, you'll agree, when COVID hit, people were able to clean out and do projects from being off work. The population growth for Campbell County is rising and will continue to rise. This is a great place to live and raise your family, so I get it, but I want to end with this. From outside looking in, people think that they understand what's going on, but I can assure you it's more than just hiring drivers, or just getting parts, or fixing the truck. That's just not how it works. There are some folks that will say it was better with this one or better with that one and bring them back. I will say, this is what I'll say to this. The improvements that's been accomplished here is looking forward, and the last thing in the world that this department needs to do is take steps back. Personally, I want to thank Johnny Bruce and Scotty Kids for checking on us and seeing the progress recently in the last six weeks. This speaks volumes about y'all's character and truly shows what your agenda is. And again, any citizen or public official that has questions, comments, concerns, Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:00, you can reach out to us at any time, and we'll discuss whatever is needed.
Get this done. I will enter the commission. Comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Kids? Anyone just say it, Scott?
I've got, I've just got a question.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Sue.
Sue.
Bayer?
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask for a spot.
I need to, I need to, somebody else asking the answer.
Hey, anyone else? Answer, anyone else? Okay. Mr. Kids, you have the floor, you have a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, appreciate the compliment you gave me and Chairman Bruce, and for a little bit there, I thought you was throwing me on the bus over the comment, the email, but I appreciate it kindly. I want to appreciate the hard work that you've been doing. It seems to me that the job is tough because it's actually, we're not getting any leadway with the trash, where you've got lack of employment, you've got, your equipment is down, is that correct? Stuff like that. But the question, okay, the other question I want to ask you is this, is we've got a meeting with the State Thursday. Can you elaborate a little bit what that, if you think that you're prepared, you think that, you know, we, the county may be hit with fees, I mean, you just be straight on us and straight up with what you would know about this meeting at the State in Knoxville?
Right, well, we've been in contact with Ms. Plon, which is our inspector. We've also been in contact with Reverend Drew, which is the manager there for T-Day. Now, this is not to throw stones at Campbell County. This is to acknowledge what the issues are, to come up with the plan collectively. Now, we will have our plan and take it down with us Thursday when we meet with the State. They're going to approve it, and they're going to say, okay, this looks like you've got it squared away. This is your plan, as long as you get it here and stick to this plan, we'll be good to go. Now, once those things sway off that, that's when there's potential for fines or things of that nature. But this is more of an identification saying, hey, we're here to help, we want to assist you guys. It's not necessarily to slap a fire on the county.
So you don't see any surprises here at the meeting at all, that we're, will be surprised? Is this what you're thinking this meeting's going to be about?
I don't see any surprise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First of all, I'd like to commend you for what you have done with the containers, everything, as far as the community and everything putting in. It has cleaned up a lot of facilities for the buyer's issue and a lot of trash that's been out. I've got several questions as far as that, but I will just limit it to one thing, just to get a handle on the garbage itself, existing garbage. You do have a plan for that?
We do. We currently have a subcontractor that's contracted out to haul for us. We haul 16 loads with him already. We actually got a requisition today for another 16 loads. He's dedicated a truck solely to us, and he pulled himself a truck, so it's two trucks that he's dedicated to us. Now, I can't speak to him, but he's dedicated just one all the time. Now, I will say this, we had three drivers quit last week. You know, it's not because they don't like us, it's not because they don't like our people, it's strictly 100% based off pay. You know, you've got drivers making 15 something an hour when they go do the exact same job, waste management, waste connections, GFL, pick one of them, make me a 20. You know, so that's what we're running into. We do have a plan to try to offset some of those issues. I've interviewed two people this week, or last week, over the phone. None of them was interested because of the pay. I hired two part-time employees, that's our CBL drivers, but they have full-time jobs, so they're literally coming in whenever they don't have to work their job to help us haul, haul refuse up.
Can I ask one more question, just pertaining to that?
Hey, you have the floor, sir.
As far as your contract hauling is concerned and the pay, you know, I guess that's your discretion on the pay on the truck drivers?
Yes.
Is there a limit to these truck drivers or just, are they based on 40 hours a week or can they make overtime?
Our, our budget is set up based on a 40-hour work week. There are some budget that is set up for overtime hours, but already this year through our projects that we've done, our overtime is already scratching the bottom. Now, I will say this, you know, it is, it is our discretion. You know, we've eliminated a truck driver position already to be able to look back towards the hourly wages of our employees. They have got more raises since I've been there than they have ever of anybody that's tenured that's worked there. They would average a five cent raise annually is what they was getting, but we've actually been able to get a couple dollars on the hour raise for them. We've done so through attrition, through abolishing certain positions that's no longer needed, and then eliminating truck driver position. Now, we're currently at a spot to where can I give an increase if I eliminate a truck driver position? But this body will still have to go because it will cross categories. When it crosses those categories, I can't, from convenience center, take it to the transfer station. So you guys would still have to go on. So yes, it's my discretion, but in order to get the waste out, the last thing we need to do is eliminate truck drivers.
Well, I agree with you, and there was a reason why I asked that question, as far as the hourly wage. And the reason I asked that, depending on the time that the trucks can get loaded at the facility and the closing time over there where they're dumping.
Yes.
If they're currently pulling two loads a day, and there's currently a little bit of freedom with their time where they can leave earlier to get there when the facility opens, and the time of the turnaround time, is it possible they could pull three loads and use the county's trucks in-house more than what you do in contractors?
We, we have pulled three loads numerous times. Not recently because of the condition of our trailers and our semis. Now, I'll say this, our semis, they have bailed us out over the last three years, but again, if this body will remember, for those of you that was on it, it wasn't set up for us to continue to run these trucks. It was a plan of 12 months, and I remember Sanitation Chair Davis speaking those exact words. I actually have it on my phone if you'd like to hear it, but they were set up and the plan was just to have them for 12 months. We'd have our compactors installed, and we'd have them move forward. So we have three 2018er Newers roll-off trucks to haul these compactors, and then we got a 2012 Roll Off International. So we have the roll-off trucks available to move this waste, but we just have to get it, the waste off the floor now to be able to utilize our trash compactors and trash chutes.
Well, that's, going with that, that gives, your personnel driver how are you going to classify it? That's in order for him to make more money, even if you don't bump the hourly rate up.
Yes, sir.
So that's the only comment that I have. I mean, I've got more, but I don't want to take off time.
No.
No, go ahead.
You have four, sir.
I'm done. Right now.
I think this is the first time we've really met. I want to compliment you on your attendance. I'm one of the people that take their garbage out there, and I really, really pack my garbage bags heavy. It's all I can do to get them out, but they're always willing to help me. But I have mentioned this. When I pull up on that line. When I pull up on that lot, the first thing I see is the cardboard.
Right.
It's pouring out of that building. Why is that?
Well, I will tell you, if it was recently, both of our Bobcats was down. Now, I'm not trying to give you these excuses, I'm telling you what's been going on. So we've had to send two cylinders off, to have them repack and purchase a cylinder. You know, there was a sensor that was gone on one of our Bobcats that was tore up, so we had to send two Bobcat in Knoxville to actually get that sensor. It took Bobcat in Knoxville a little while to get it to us. So we was taking that Bobcat, and one time loading garbage with it, because it was the only piece of equipment in our facility that was offered. You know, so again, it kind of goes back, it's all to, it wasn't really designed to move that waste. So I don't want to tell you that because we was having to move waste, it damaged that equipment, but the reality of it is, is if we wasn't doing that, we wouldn't have had any refuse moved out of the facility. So it was the reason why. So we was pushing it with forklifts. Our drivers, you know, we, we had frontload trucks down. We was going to the schools for a week and a half, and hand-unloading dumpsters, with two drivers in our rearload. You know, our hands was high. We understand that if the snake comes in, and there's waste on, at the schools, we understand those things. The jail is the same way. We was hand-unloading these dumpsters. So it's not like effort on our people's part, it was strictly based off of equipment being that we get.
Okay, with a cardboard now, does the county make money off that cardboard? Do we sell the cardboard?
We do. So before I took over, the county used to haul it themselves to West Rock, or a company of West Rock. And they would get X amount of dollars for whatever that was. So we brokered it out, we have a brokers company that comes in, they haul it for us, they pick it up, they haul it, and they pay us the exact same rate that it was if we was trucking it over to West Rock. So we do make money off of it. You know, in times past, we had those 40-yard compa, or 40-yard boxes sitting outside there. We was getting sheet rock, and dead goats, and, I mean, just all kinds of stuff. So, and it was soaking wet, so we're graded off of how much moisture this cardboard has. We put it inside this building, it was an inconvenience at the first, until you kind of conditioned our citizens of the county now. You know, they're used to it, and I will say, so it's not an interruption, and that in the disposal of the convenience center. We tell people, "Look, just throw it out there, we'll clean it up. We don't want you, you know, to have to go and be like, 'Well, I don't know what to do with it.'" Just set it right there beside it, we'll get it cleaned up, and then we'll get the mess cleaned up.
Okay, let me, let me ask you this. It's been asked to me several times about recycling.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you all recycle out there?
I'll say this, we, we had it set up with the sheriff's office, that we was utilizing four to five inmates weekly. They would come in, and they would help us sort through this. Again, it was how we was able to increase some of our attendance and our labor's wages, by abolishing some of the part-time personnel that was sorters of that recycle. So we got those inmates, and I don't know if you know a whole lot about working with inmates, you know, they're in there for a reason, you know. There's some good folks that's in there, there's not a doubt in my mind. But sometimes they try to manipulate the system, you know. So the officer that would bring them out, on his crew, they failed a drug test, and then the same ones that was, we would go and obtain, they failed a drug test. So at the time, it was, it was hard to keep them, every time they come back in the facility, they have to take a drug test. So if they failed it, you know, they're not getting out on work release anymore. So long story short, we do recycle, we've always recycled, and I know a lot of folks tend to think that we may not. I'll tell you where that comes from. The municipalities bring us recyclables in. We, and here's how we identified it. So the municipalities was coming in, going across our scales. They were getting credit for the total amount of recyclables that they had, weight-wise, on that truck. Well, they would dump it out in our facility, and it would not be recyclables, it would be, it would be refuse, garbage. So we couldn't show that we was exporting five-ton recyclables, that was five-ton recyclables. You know, so once we sorted through that recycle, it would be one and a half ton, but they got credit for five ton. So, long story short, getting the municipalities on board now, we tried to spearhead this. I know Jimmy Jeffries was at La Follette, we reached out to some of the municipalities, had a meeting in this building about it. Getting them on board, they say they don't have the resources to make sure that it's clean, but it goes back to this, if you bring your recyclables out there as a county citizen, we require you guys to separate them. So the municipalities ought to do the same, require their people to separate it, instead of bringing them in as refuges. Our other transfer stations will just have the recyclables out. It's the same concept.
Just one more thing. Now, I have seen an improvement out there from the transfer station, the garbage, it's definitely improved, but the scrap iron on top, what's been done with that?
Actually, most of that scrap iron, Chuck, whenever he was actually on, we've got the majority of that away. I did have some guys come in Saturday, and load some boxes, but we haven't disposed of them yet. So most of the scrap iron is gone, when the Chuck's crew came in. There is still some, but it's not like it was.
Well, I have seen an improvement.
Yes, ma'am.
It may take a while, Mr. Chairman, I've got about 10 pages.
You got the floor, sir.
And let me say, Bill, whether I've not called you, don't mean I've not checked on you.
Sure.
If you were, we got a letter a couple weeks from you, and that's one reason I haven't called you. But, and since then, I found out some things. The one, number one question, and I'm, and you know me, I don't beat around the bush.
Yes, sir.
I'm straight. Who's your boss?
Well, I assume this body.
So you agree that the county commission is your boss?
I think regulatory-wise, the county executive is the actual boss over at the department. Now, you guys voted to do that, I'm not sure the stipulation's on that, so I would say I've got.
Let me stop you. Joe, who's in charge of the sanitation director?
County commission.
Okay. We've got that cleared, I hope, tonight. Because I'm getting emails, I'm getting text messages. One of the biggest thing, I guess I get wore out constantly is on, is we're not, the county commission is not putting any money in that system out there. I have your budget for the last two years.
Yes, sir.
How much money do you think we put in maintenance, the county commission?
In maintenance?
In maintenance alone.
So what are you, what are you at? How much?
Total, maintenance, the part, the whole, the whole shindig, from one end to the other, how much money do you think we put in?
I'd have to look.
Would you think around $65,000 a year?
I would say maybe more than that.
Well, what I'm showing here, was sent from finance this evening, is about $65,000. Are you aware that in the last year, just in tires along, you had $28,000 in tires?
Yes, sir.
You spent 99.5% of that?
Yes, sir.
Over the whole entire year. Do you know what you've spent already in two months?
Yes, sir.
How much?
I would say $30,000.
You've spent 75% of your $29,000.
So I can't.
I, I'm just, we'll move on, I'm sorry, but I just want to make, make this clear, the county commission is not holding you back. We've never, since I've been here, and I've been here longer than you, we've not held you back. Everything you've asked for, we've tried to give you.
I agree.
And the commission has tried to help you.
For the most part.
I mean, I can tell you right now, I've got lamb-blasted here probably two months ago about coming out there and working for two days for free. And not only I, but there was other commissioners too.
Sure. I'll say like this, Mr. George, this body as a whole is really trying to ignore the sanitation picture, or what the condition that it's in. Now, there has been a select number of people, and I'll let you, let your mind run with it, if you want to talk about it after, we will, but that is trying to hinder some of the forward progress that we've had too. Whether it be contact our employees, play this one off that one. At the end of the day, here's how it works. You guys hold me accountable, or everybody else would be up here. I'm the one that needs to have the conversation with you.
And I do agree, the county, the county commission is, is in charge of you.
Sure.
Not the employees.
Sure.
But there's occasion that you've had a fill-in.
Oh, absolutely.
Not, not assistant director, but a fill-in, when you've been on vacation, been out, been off from work. What, now you said you had a plan, how long is it going to take this plan to be clean? We've got about 400, and I've actually reached out to some other people that knows more about garbage than I do, and maybe more than you do. We've got about 400 tons of garbage at the transfer station, give or take 20 or 50 ton.
Yeah, I would say.
What's the plan?
I'll tell you this, originally, we had it set up, two weeks with a subcontractor, and a month's worth of that track loader ready. Now, we didn't get that for a week, we didn't get the track loader for a week.
Well, let me stop you before we move on, and I'm going to do that, and I apologize upfront. Now, you sent a letter out, we received last week, that one of the holdups was, there was a track loader that didn't come in for a couple days, and it held you up.
Yes, sir.
Now, wasn't it, didn't you already have a track loader out there, a little green one?
We had many, yes.
So you did have something to load with.
There's a, there's a.
They, but it's better than nothing.
Oh, it is.
And then you had an overlapped time from about three or four days, that you had both pieces of equipment there.
Well, they actually had planned to come and get it, so.
They didn't come get it.
It wasn't utilized.
Yes, it was.
It was not utilized.
It was.
My people's here now.
It was utilized. I was out there when it was being, both pieces of equipment was being used.
Well, I'll tell you this, they were told to fill it up and park it, because they was coming to get it.
Yeah, it was. I'll move on, and I'm sorry. You put down that we removed 1,602 tons in the month of August. The paperwork that you sent across, and I sat down last night, and went through the paperwork, and I apologize, I'll have to hunt it. You sent out a sheet also, that broke it down per day.
Yes, sir.
There's 31 days in August. Out of the 31 days, we don't, landfill's not open on Saturdays and Sundays. So that's eight days, that left 23 days. And you broke it down, and I'm glad you did, and actually, I've got the actual receipts from the landfill also.
Yes, sir.
Now, it says that you, it was 1,602 in August, the month of August, is 1,796.90, or 69 tons of refuges received at Toastering.
That's commercial. So that's, that's not kept from the citizens, that's not played.
Only commercial.
On the commercial side.
The cities, is that what was took to the landfill, from the tractors, or from?
It is, and it's from both. So the municipalities bringing in, if we load a compactor from the transfer station, it was taken as well, and it would, it would reflect transfer station on that sheet. So.
And it does, it does show that the compacters brought in 400, was took to the landfill, 447.69 tons.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that was all, not just the Toastering. They didn't come to Toastering and dump it out, it went, so actually, it wasn't hauled by a trailer from Toastering?
No, sir. Not, not if it's on a roll-off truck, it's not.
Okay, 866.43 tons was hauled by trailers.
Yes, sir.
Which came from the transfer station.
That is correct.
So there's not 1,600 and something ton come from Toastering?
I see, I see what you're saying. Most of our refuse comes from Toastering. So yes, there may be a box that we've swapped out. So if they get a box through the week, they'll go, let's say to Wellspring, they'll swap that box and take it straight to the landfill. Now, at the end of the day, if Vasper calls in, we'll get a box that we'll swap Vasper out, but we don't have time to take it back to the transfer sta, or the landfill, so they'll take it to our facility, set it off, stage it, leave it on the truck, whatever we need to do, to integrate the haul for the next morning. So the next morning, when that driver gets in that truck, it's going straight from Toastering road. Now, I can't tell you that they've not been some mistakes, and them say, "Well, this is transfer station," and in our reality, it was Vasper, I can't tell you that. Because a lot of times, you have to move truck drivers around, just to be able to get refugees off.
And it's, and it's, and I looked at the breakdown from the Scott solid waste that they sent the receipts.
Yes, sir.
And it shows, and this is the way I formulate it, usually it's about a 10, 11 ton per compactor size.
On the haul side, yes, sir.
And then if you have an open top container, it's probably around a 6 ton, 7 ton.
Yes, sir.
And the tractors are how much?
They average anywhere from 18 to 20 ton.
Should we be hauling 38 ton?
No, sir.
On a trailer?
No, sir. And again, if you've seen a decrease in our trucking, if you will, we had a trailer that was at the landfill, that would not walk off, because it had 30-plus ton. Now, what we done was, we started implementing, everybody go across the scales prior to leaving the transfer.
I mean, you discussed that, back when we had the commercial driver hauling, when he got the big ticket by T-Doc.
So our operators and our truck drivers are very familiar with that equipment, all right?
I understand, I've run equipment in my earlier days, whether I look it or not, but, but it don't hurt one bit to make sure the scale's right in Scott County, because we're paying them a fee, and to protect our drivers, because I know when they get a ticket, that could take them out of being a truck driver.
Yes, sir. So like we discussed, you know, even if they do it once, just to honestly, if it's nothing else but keep the scale house at volunteer waste, you know, honest, it's still working. But nine out of 10 times, our operators and truck drivers know how much weight they're putting on those trucks.
But now, let's use, let's use a scenario. If you went and hauled a 30, 38 ton, and I think it's, might have been 37 something, I've got it in the paperwork, and it shows one truck.
Yes, sir.
That come across the scale, and they've got the time and the date. What if something happened between here and Scott County?
Absolutely. It'd be detrimental. I'll say it like this, hindsight is 20/20. If you would have told me that our truck would have even pulled 38 ton, I'd have laughed at you. We average, you know, 20 ton on those semi trucks. That wasn't an anomaly. I can't tell you what it was, I believe it was when, you know, Mr. Samples' operator was there helping us load. But I, you know, at the end of the day, we identified it, we made some arrangements or steps to prevent that from happening, going on. But yes, that was most certainly something that could have been detrimental.
And I'm going to try to move on quickly. I did some numbers, and I've actually asked Jeff Marlowe, our finance director, to run through it too. And how many ton do you think it, it takes per day to keep the transfer station clear?
To keep it clear?
To keep it clear, to keep it back to square one of the even.
I.
And this is based on information at the landfill versus what's come across our scale?
I'd say you'd probably have to move 100 ton.
Just to keep it clear? Okay, what he's come up with, and I've come up with, is 40 ton. If we cleared 40 ton a day, that would keep us square one, where we're at right now. And if that... Mr. Chairman?
Please, folks.
If they've got something to say, they can say it to me, I don't care. But at the end of the day, you may think, and I've actually had this conversation with different ones, when you look out there, I've had one guy tell me it's over 1,000 ton on the ground. Garbage and gravel's two different things.
Yes, sir.
What's coming into Toastering, Toastering, per day, is around 40 something tons, 40 to 50 tons. If we haul two tractors a day, that's 20 tons, that's 40 ton, which will stay at even. If we had two more tractors running, if we made four loads a day, in 10 days, every bit of that garbage ought to be gone.
I'll tell you this.
Am I correct, or am I wrong, or do you think?
Not that I'm going to contradict what you're saying on paper, it may look it, but that's not the reality of it. It can't be. If we can make four loads consistently every single day, and that, we'd be caught up this week with what trucks we hadn't run.
In the days that we didn't haul in August, the three zeros, do you know why?
Yes, sir. Our trucks was down, we thought we lost the transmission in one of our red trucks, the A manual was able to make sure that that was safe, would be offable again within the following day. We had a trailer that wouldn't walk off. We had an incident with one of our drivers losing a roll-off wheel, you know, so it did prevent us from being able to get any loads to land.
And we're doing maintenance checks every morning?
Say again?
Maintenance checks every morning on our trucks?
Yes, sir. They do a pre-trip and a bulk trip.
So, how long do you think it's going to take to clean up just about 400 ton we got out there?
I, you know, I want to tell you a week and a half, but I, you know, two weeks. If everything goes great, smooth, is our plan. Now, I can't, I'm sure there's anomalies and hiccups that, you know.
You're going to have, as long as you're running piece equipment, they're going to break down.
I'll tell you this, three weeks, we'll have it moved with hiccups. You know what I'm saying? So, as long as we can have drivers.
And you've reached out to other contractors too, huh?
Yes, sir.
And I've reached out to other contractors.
Yes, sir.
I've worked all last week, getting, trying to get, I found one company, I don't, I don't know if we could actually do it or not. Maybe discuss that with you in private. Financially, we'd clean it up. But you'd have to have somebody load it, and it's not going to take, you can't load in an hour and make any time. It's got to be loaded. The trucks, my, I hear Mike Douglas say, do I know how your operation runs? No, but I've seen it run.
Right.
If you had the trucks loaded, or the trailers loaded the evening, and they was in Scott County when the gate opened at 6:00, could you, could you get another load?
Absolutely, you can get three loads. Now, nine out of 10 times, that's what we try to do. There's always anomaly, whether, you know, people show up to work. At the end of the day, you can harp all you want, you're still paying $14 an hour to the CDM driver, you're only going to harp for a little while.
We pay more than $14 an hour, though.
Recently, this budget cycle was 15, 23.
Yeah. The commission raised the salary 75 cents this time, which I know we're still in.
But that's countywide, so everybody got that, that increase.
How many truck drivers are you down? You said three? And is that Class A, Class Bs, what?
Class As.
So, you don't have no tractor drivers?
I've got one.
You got one tractor driver, and you got one, now beforehand, we didn't have three drivers, we only had two.
On.
On Class As.
So, in 2019, we've had to change, and we was hot seat the truck. Just because the amount of refuse that we was getting in, we'd have those two transfer station drivers take two loads every single day. That third load, I'd pull drivers from my frontload line of business, from my roll-off line of business, that had Class A CDMs and hauling that third load. So, we was able to maintain that with the three semis and the three trailers running consecutive. Now, we don't have that luxury.
So, you're saying we probably need to rent another semi and a trailer?
No. We currently can get it with the current setup. We have a subcontractor, I think Paul Myers, and he's been hauling. He came in last Friday himself personally, I think it was, and he's had a driver there, I think on the 29th was the first day that they started hauling. So, we, and again, I think Ben just said it, you know, you can see the progress and still taking in the amount of waste.
And it was 866.43 tons in August.
That's true.
At 23 days, in which we had three days that we didn't take any tractors.
Right.
So, it was 20 days. And if you do, if you do the math on 23 days, and this will go back to the calculations I had, we averaged 34.93 tons per day.
So, to put it.
And that status an even.
So, to put it in perspective, on the 29th, 30th, and 31st is when we had, last month is when we had a subcontractor hauler. And he hauled 73.9 tons and 41.11 tons. So, the amount of waste that that adds to what we're currently hauling, I mean, it's detrimental. We have to have, you know, and that's why, you know, we done our requisition, had another 16 loads put in place, because we recognize and see the lack of drivers, the equipment, the condition that it's in. We have to have a subcontractor come in and have haul.
And I understand that, where we're at now, but I mean, and getting truck drivers in here, you know, the commission may have to sit back and punt and try to come up with more money for funding for truck drivers.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not kicking against your men trying to work.
Yes, sir.
But there's going to have to be a change somewhere. I mean, you've had this discussions numerous times. It comes in, it's got to go out.
Yes, sir. I'll say this to you, Mr. George, that's the plan of every employee, myself, anybody that works for Environmental Services. We, we don't want that waste sitting there. It makes it harder, 10 times harder on our jobs if that garbage is there, you know.
Well, when it gets covered up, you have to work around it.
Oh, I.
You can't work with it. You know, to me, and you think the, and I've been hearing you say tonight, that the compacters at the transfer station will work.
They will.
Will they work with, with the Class 4 build materials put in?
We, we're going to have to regulate. Now, we're not going to do away with a semi and trailer. We are some of them, but not all of them. So, our plan is, is if it's long items, that's Class 4, we'll still utilize that semi-trailer, pack it down, pack as much we can, and take a trip to the landfill once that's fully. But for the most part, when it comes in commercial-wise, we're going to have to restrict, have folks bring it in. It's already set in place. A perfect example is our brush, right? Our brush, we're not supposed to take anything that's over 8-inch diameter, right? Well, I'll be honest with you, there's two-foot logs up there, you know, and it comes in on whether it's the municipalities or a private hauler. You can't see everything. You see brush hanging out the truck. Once they dump it, you see a two-foot diameter log. Are you going to tell them to pick it up? You know, I mean, at the end of the day, that's when you guys start getting called again. So, it's things that's already set in place, that's never been endorsed, I don't want to say enforced, because we're not into the enforcement side. You know, it's same way with the wheel tax sticker. You know, we started that because that's what this body advised us to do, and it was already set in place. Well, when the phone calls started coming, the wheel tax sticker went out the window, just let them go. You know, that's, that's not how you guys set it up, or this body set it up. You know, so there's things set in place, but this body's got to endorse those regulations that you guys have set up.
Well, you can't stop a citizen that's a property tax owner of this county from bringing garbage.
I understand.
Whether they have a wheel tax from Ohio, they may still own property here.
It's not necessarily that the Ohio or the Kentucky, that's not really the issue. You know, we've got neighbor in counties, and folks bring us refuse guys. We've harped on it, we've identified it. They say, well, you know, we've got a house up here that's my mamaws, and I get it, I mean, I do. We're not trying to dictate what waste that we get and how we do it. We're just trying to endorse what you guys set up. So, when we're doing those things.
Let's get back on topic.
Yes, sir.
I think we're trying, getting off topic here, county.
There was a plan that had been brought up about a month ago about taking the compacters out.
Yes, sir.
And when the compacters was put in place, I feel they wasn't ready, because we didn't have the chutes ready. So, we missed about, what, six, five or six days of hauling anything, because we didn't have anything to load with.
That's right.
So, and I've reached out to people that's in this business, that's in the waste management business, and they feel that they want. You know, at one time, we actually had a two-yard compactor's.
We did, yes, sir.
Plan for that site up there. And, and me, talking to different people, actually found out we needed a four-yarder.
And we actually asked for that from the beginning, because if you'll remember, we wanted a pre-crusher.
Yeah, and the pre-crusher was something that the chuns decided chuns didn't want.
Yeah. So, when we reached out to municipal, they advised us, this was what would work for you guys. So, it's not like this was our plan, because listen, folks, I'm not a compactor guru. I don't know that.
Well, the compacters are working at the small sites.
Absolutely.
Because you're taking off 400 and something ton in the month of August that would have been coming to the, to the transfer station.
Yes, sir.
Which would have been more overwhelmed, we'd had 400 and something more ton sitting there.
Yes, sir.
But there was a plan devised to go up on the main hilltop and pour a slab and move those compacters up there, and only take household trash from the cities and from the commercial side of it, and not take no Class 4 couches, build materials, and use the transfer station for the tractors for that.
Yes, sir.
You know, what's your plan, what's your thoughts on that, Bill?
As far as my understanding is, that did not pass from the commission as far as moving forward with that. Now, I'll tell you this, we will do anything that this body recommends us to do.
Well, I mean, you're part of it, and that's why we've always tried to reach back to you.
So, in the grand scheme of things, will the transfer station to hold all that? Absolutely. Will I tell you that our meeting, and Mr. Kids brought this up a while ago, our meeting with T-Dog is Thursday. Now, Ms. Plon advised us that she's going to review our permit and see what the transfer station and convenience center has required to take. So, when you say, well, what's the big deal about that? So, we're permitted from the state to take X and X and X, right? So, whatever that is, it might be bag residential waste, right? If, if that permit reflects that Campbell County Environmental Services is only supposed to take bag residential household garbage, how will this body respond to that? You see what I'm saying? Because that is the last thing in the world that we take. Yes, we take bag residential household waste, but folks say, well, it says household waste. Well, if I clean my garage, and I've got five bed frames and two headboards, and well, any other place that you go besides Campbell County, you'll pay for disposal of those items. Period.
And we've been fortunate over the years to be able to take it, and I understand, I think most of the body understands that Class 4, no county has to take Class 4.
No, sir.
Our, under state statute, we have to take household garbage.
Yes, sir.
And I think there's some kind of statue in there for cars. And the brush is something else we take, and it's kind of helps along. And that goes, the last question I'm probably going to ask, because I've worn yous out, I'm sure. When's the last time we burned?
Did we burn today, or did it Friday? Where's that? When?
Friday.
It's, how many days have we, has it been since we burned up till Friday?
Before then, it was probably two weeks. And it's documented there, I can get the exact number.
Yeah, I mean, the last time, well, I was actually up there last Wednesday.
So, if you'll go up there and you'll look around, there's plenty of room up there. You get the municipalities that come in, and they will dump in the roadway if you're not up there holding somebody's hand. Now, why it's that way, I can answer that. We've reached out to everybody we know to reach out to, to try and get them all aboard, even the drivers. Now, we, we have the ability to ban them from that facility. We say, hey, listen, you don't need to come back in here until you're going in here. But at the end of the day, it's just causing more turmoil than it's worth. So, we end up having to flip the bill and say, okay, we'll go up there and push it. Well, everybody sees the perception, it's, oh, my gosh, it's full. Well, it's not full. It's just they're dumping in the road, and they choosing to go back here in the back by the actual burn to be able to dispose of that.
What about all the trash that's up there that somebody's diverted around?
Well, there's been a lot of that as well. And I tell you, as much as I want to put stock in the citizens of this county, that they'll dispose of things how they're supposed to, you and I both, no, that's not the case. If they can pull one over somebody, they will. Not everybody, for the most part, folks do the right thing. But there's a select few that like to push their load, and then they'll bring in whether it's commercial or whatever. And identifying is one thing, but doing something about it's something else. So, we've had to let us talk to folks about it. I know there's 700 tires up there currently, that's nothing of us, you know, we didn't dispose of them up there. They was instructed to. So, a lot of folks will see that and say, well, I'll throw my stuff out here, and I ain't going to go back down there to bother anyone.
But we're going to clean it, it's going to be cleaned up.
Absolutely, we'll have to.
At, Mr. Chairman, I've talked enough, I guess, I need to be quiet. And I'm sorry, I apologize to everybody in here, but I could go on for another hour, but I'm sure yous don't want me to.
Back to your question, you want?
No, just the biggest thing is about two weeks.
That's our plan, yes, sir.
As the plan is going right now, everything should be cleaned up.
Yes, sir. Unless there's a hiccup. And I'll tell you, in this industry, if there's potential, I'm not going to say there's going to be, but in this industry, there's a potential.
Okay. One more thing, Mr. Bruce, when, and I was the one that pushed for that two-inch water feet.
Yes, sir.
Is it being utilized at the Tostring site to keep that leachate sprayed out from underneath?
It is at the bottom, it's not at the top.
That's what I'm saying, at the bottom, at the compacters.
Well, at the bottom, it is leachate. I've sprayed three times myself. You know, our tenants, they spray, and they'll clean it off, but, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, there's not so much waste that's coming in that facility you can spray off, and by the end of the day, it's going to be.
Have we worked the maintenance on the compactor since we've had them in? Have we took them apart?
We have not, no, sir.
Okay. And that's been since when the compacters went in?
It's kind of vary on all of them, because all of them.
Is April, May?
Somewhere around there.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Mr. Ruth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your hard work. I've got a few questions I'd like to ask.
Yes, sir.
How much do these compacters weigh?
At our offsites, so, it's kind of vary on what they put in. You know, we have two in Oswego. Oswego and Wellspring are the two places where we get the most amount of trash, with the exception of Tostring. Wellspring, they average 12 ton, somewhere around there. Now, in the first stage of this, Mr. Gibson, it was a work effort for all of them. You know, they didn't know, they thought one slot started breaking in, and they had to push the button. So, it was kind of a learning through trial and error for some of them. Now, I will say this, we had two sites that they averaged almost 15 ton every time the box came in, and that's Peabody and Elbatt. You know, it's 12 plus on both of those boxes. Now, some of the guys, they'll call and say, man, my, my compactor's full, I need one or I won't hold this week. You know, we've tried to say, man, we don't want to call until it's completely full. Well, when we do that, you know, folks get a little fired up about it, so we just end up taking a six-ton box, swapping it out, so they'll get through the week.
Okay. Well, I see several. These numbers vary a lot.
They do, yes, sir.
I mean, a lot.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it goes down, right here, 6.16.
Yes, sir.
Tons. Well, now, that may have been an open top as well. We've got one 3.5 tons. How do you determine which is which?
I, I see.
As I can see, I don't know if I actually put that on that spreadsheet that I did. I know it's on the landfill tickets that we received. So, it'll say open top or sealed in there?
How do they determine, the guys that's working out there, how do they determine when that place full?
On the compacters.
On the compacters.
There's a couple ways. There's a fire chute that is a port that's in the top middle part of that box. How this waste goes in this box is, the boxes are set up to where the garbage will roll, right? So, it keeps compacting, keeps rolling, keeps rolling. When it gets to that port, they say that this box is full. Now, there's a red light that's on these boxes. So, when it pushes so many PSI, the light starts blinking, right? There's an override button, when that light starts blinking, it's 85% full. That's supposed to give us time to be able to go and swap it out, get it empty, swap those containers out. Now, the problem with that is, is we're not real sure how that light is really working with it. Because there's times the light will blink, you know, on all the compacters, and it'll be, you know, 85% full, but it won't blink at all, and you can't get another bag in it. You know, so there's, there's some things set up, but to tell you the truth, these guys are mold. The more they use it, the more they're learning how much waste will actually go in.
What, what kind of, do you have a repair list up there?
A repair on trucks?
We, we do. We, we have a binder that has our-
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Everything we do service-wise, if it's a headlight, it's in a binder, and our mechanic and his helper actually will write it down into that, that binder. You're welcome to come out and do that as well.
What about the, the metal that, someone said Chuck Sample was taking all the metal out there, is, is that?
Well, and, you know, Mr. Sample was at the last meeting, saying that he'd take everything that we got. He came over, assisted in loading that, didn't charge us anything for actually utilizing the load, and took every single thing that we had, but in, in the timeframe of that, there's still been some metal that wasn't got, and we've received some metal. It's nothing like it was, and we're able to put it in, in roll-off boxes. We have reached out to a couple different companies to say they can utilize and set a box, or haul our container every single day. They're supposed to get back to us and kind of fill us in if they can or not. We did let them know that we'd have to have their insurance, and said they can haul one of our containers and things of that nature, so. And I don't care to tell you who it is, it's Noble Metals. And as long as it's market price, you don't, you don't have to haul it, you know, we, we definitely present it to the, to the committee, letting them make that decision.
Can I ask you something about the new blacktop up there?
Yes, sir.
How many times a week does that thing clean?
I can't answer as far as a week. Now, on a perfect world, I like to think that they're cleaning it once a week. We did receive our brush last week for our, our grasshopper, so once, as soon as we get an opportunity to install that, I'll tell you, I'll go out on them and say, you know, we'll scrub it a couple times a week, don't care long. But we just received our brush from ARB Enterprise. The, a lot of the issue with spraying with the two-inch hoses, the, the water was running off, it was shooting straight across the street. You know, we didn't want to cause any more issues than there is. You know, Mr. Samples has been acknowledged about it. You know, so at the end of the day, I mean, we're not trying to cause problems, we're trying to, you know, find solutions. So when that brush came in, we're going to be able to maintain some of that runoff water. Now, once it goes past our brush, I can't tell you, you know, where it's going to go, but I mean, we don't, we don't care to spray it off. I have people available to spray it.
Okay, back, back to the whole trash deal?
Yes, sir.
Get it cleaned up. How many deadlines do you give?
Well, we, we gave one last week, uh, it was the week before last. And, and again, those, those hinged, and that was contingent on being able to obtain a piece of equipment and a contractor to haul. Now, the piece of equipment that we originally tried to obtain, and I talked to Mr. Bruce, and we, we couldn't utilize that piece of equipment because of legality side of it. If it would have been, had to go to court, it would have been held in Ohio, and it's just something that we wasn't, wasn't trying to do. So, it was four days after that when we obtained the truck load. The hauler that we had set up, something happened to his authority number, and I'm not sure some of the details. All I know is he couldn't haul for us, so we had to go back to the drawing board. Now, how I found out with Mr. Myers was, we literally drove by the road. I realized I went to school with Paul, and, and I got his number off Cybertruck. A lot of these haulers, you, you can obtain, I will tell you, the cost is detrimental, some of them is outrageous, and Mr. Orville, you'll agree, because I'm sure you've reached out to some as well. Finding equipment, it was an issue because of Eastern Kentucky, the floods. You know, a lot of those was, the equipment was loaded up, and we reached out to NBI, we reached out to Scott Solid Waste, and even local haulers, again, dump trucks. We even tried to see if we can get our highway department to potentially haul, kicked out ID around, and at the end of the day, none of it was feasible until we found the actual haulers.
I have one more question. Mr. Dwayne Gibbs, you up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill, first of all, I wanted to thank you and your employees for the great job you've done. I mean, it's, it's been an undertaking, I know, and basically, the questions I had's already been answered, is the, the plan with the subcontractor and the recycling plan, but in the timeframe recap on that, you said it'd be about cleanup time?
Again, everything, if everything goes good, I want to tell you, you know, two weeks.
Right.
I, I, I don't, if we have a hiccup, I, I'll send an email, make a phone call, you know, but at the end of the day, I don't want you to not have this expectation of the wallet, because I promise to you, if it can happen in this industry, chances are it's going to happen to us.
Okay, that's good. Appreciate the communication, and one more question, and I'll, on the compactors, how much are they averaging tons?
At the offsites, we're getting 12, somewhere around, I mean, you know, it all depends on what's put in.
Uh-huh, right.
We have one in Oswego that'll average 10 ton consistently, but it's bulky out, with chairs and couches, you know. But we average refuse about 10 ton.
Okay, all right.
Or 12 ton.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you, Bill, I appreciate it, thank you. So ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Bill, you mentioned when you were talking a few minutes ago, that you had an assistant director before?
I did, yes, ma'am.
Now, is that salary still in your budget?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you think it would be beneficial to you to have an assistant director again?
100% without a doubt.
Okay.
I, I, Josh Williams is irreplaceable in my eyes because of his capabilities. You know, and at the end of the day, I mean, having somebody else there in lieu of my absence to just make a decision. Our people are good to go, I'm telling you, it's some of the best people I have ever worked in this business with, but they need somebody that'll be able to step in and give directions.
I know the commission discussed getting an assistant director there at one time, and-
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think that passed, actually, I'm not sure.
Assistant director position is in my budget.
So you could, you could hire one if you wanted to?
I, I, I assume that I can now. I, I was told when we were seeking one that I couldn't till after the election.
I got you. Until after the election?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. One other, this is a real, a short question. Which site does not have a compactor yet?
Stony Fork.
Oh, you've got to get one up there, that's my district.
I'll tell you this, it's, it's, if Stony Fork had a box, that would help us out dramatically.
Right, okay.
And it's just difficult going over there and open talk. It would help us out, because again, the ratio is six to one of the refus. Now, the lady we have over there is outstanding. She has stopped a lot of Scott County and Old Idaho and, and folks from coming over. Why do you want a truck from Scott County over to Stony Fork is beyond me, but they was bringing in trailer loads of garbage, and she's been stopped.
Stopped, good. That's all.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
How long you think this trash issue has been a, been a problem?
I'll, I'll tell you this.
I don't want a long spiel, I just want the straight to the point. How, how many months have we been going on with this now?
So, July-
Okay.
Was when it, when it started.
July, like, early July, late July?
Oh, it is early July.
Okay.
I come back from vacation at the end of the week.
Okay, all right. So, just going down through this list. So, July the 5th, which is on Tuesday, the, the landfill opens, you can start dumping at 6, right?
That's correct.
First load's at 9:42. 7:06, first load's at 8:59. 7:07, first load's at 7:39. Friday, 7:08, first load's at 7:10. Monday, 7:11, first load's at 10:18.
And I can't actually speak as far as detail, Mr. Baird, on-
But what I'm saying is, is if it's an issue, why are we not at the landfill first thing?
I, I mean, there could have been trucks down. I'm, I might have, and I know that I had three drivers quit in July, or it may have been the end of June, but I, I can't 100% I can find out, but I can't answer it as far as just off the top of my head. I'll, I'll tell you this, if they're not there, 7:30, somewhere in that vicinity, 8:00, there's something that's happening, you know, whether it be flat tires, you know, I, I know you don't come to our facility and get flat. I, I've got six floods in my front tire now, you know. So things happen. When you drive over waste, it happens. It's not because we want to, and, and if you all can help us get gravel, I'd be much appreciative of it. We, he got us a load of gravel today, but, but the mud and complaints and all those things are something that could potentially, you know, cause a flat or something happen. I, I've had drivers quit, I'm, I'm not 100% on why.
Okay, well, the, it looked like it was a going trend all month.
Sure.
And, and if that's an issue, why are we not staggering drivers?
Sure, and, and it could be. I, I'll tell you this, Mr. Baird, I, I'll try anything as far as staggering their schedules. A lot of time, you have to rob Peter to pay Paul, when you've got drivers that's working for, you know, 15 bucks an hour.
So will they not rather go in earlier and get off earl, go in earlier and get off earlier?
Sometimes. It, it's all according to who you're talking to.
I mean, I guess my thing is, is you're the boss.
I understand it.
And they got answer to you.
Yeah, and, and-
So you can't be buddy-buddy with them, you got to make them do their job.
Completely get it, but I'm bossing $15.12 an hour, when they can say, you know what, I'm done with you, I'm going over here to make $25 an hour. If I only haul it out, I'm going over here.
Folks, listen, just a second, Dwayne, please, keep your comments and stuff to yourself and everything, once we're finished here, and when everybody's leaving, you can talk to anybody you want to, please. All the people I want talking now is Mr. Rutherford and the commissioner that he's speaking with. Thank you. Go ahead, Ryan, I'm sorry.
I, I get that it's 15, 16 dollars an hour, I mean, nowadays is, is not a lot of money.
Yes, sir.
I mean, even in my job, that's not a lot of money. But at the end of the day, that's their job.
It is.
And, and it's your job to make sure they do their job.
Mr. Baird, I agree, sir.
Okay, okay, we're good there, all right. All right. So the metal, you did take a lot, I did see you did take a lot of it off.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I said that I felt like, and I would never tell you how to do your job, because that's not my job. I thought it should have been taken off every week, once a week.
Agreed.
Now, now, you said that Noble Metals, you'd reached out to them about giving you a quote. They're not local, are they?
They're based at Oak Ridge.
Okay, so they're not local.
Yes.
All right. I get that any of our local metal companies probably don't pay you market price, but if it's going to sit there and they're not willing to give you a quote, would it not be best just to get what we can get out of it at this time?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And again, it'll be this body that makes that decision.
Well, now wait a minute.
I mean, we, we present things to-
Now wait a minute, no, 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 wait a minute. I get that, but do you have to have permission from me to take metal to anybody in town?
No.
Okay.
That's not what I'm saying. But before I enter into any kind of agreement, it would be brought before the certification committee.
So, so, so let's, for example, say the market of the day is, I don't know what the market is today, but let's just say $5 a ton.
Okay.
All right, and we're sitting here on this metal for a month, and it goes down to $2 a ton. We've lost money, haven't we?
Yeah, so, we're not talking on the day-to-day side, we're talking about entering into an agreement as somebody hauling for us.
I, I get that, but, but I would rather take care of our local companies before I'd take care of somebody from-
And you was, you know, Mr.-
Right, right.
Right across the street.
And, and I know he's not the only metal company around too, so I'm, um, next thing is, um, as far as the equipment, what equipment have we bought since you've been hired?
We have purchased a grasshopper mower, and a backhoe, and then two roll-off trucks. We have a, a roll-off wagon that's supposed to be here in October, which will help, assist in, will be able to haul two compactor boxes to the landfill at the same time.
And, and excavator, right?
I'm sorry?
And, and the-
We've ran it an excavator.
Okay. So the ba, yeah, backhoe, I'm sorry. So, but the backhoe wasn't, isn't, the backhoe we got's not set up for what we're doing?
No, sir.
Okay. And whose idea was it to that particular backhoe?
So, the current setup that we was at, the backhoe is what we needed.
That one?
That one, yes, sir. That's the biggest backhoe that was on the market. So we, our ide, our ideology was, man, it's still able to push brush, we can still push waste, you know, it wasn't intended to push waste full-time because we had a high lift. Now, granted, the high lift caught fire, it was damaged, you know, I believe they have an update on that as well, but until we get that back, the, the backhoe's been saved very well.
All right. Now, last question. You said two weeks. If nothing major happens, I've got two, I got one question, okay. Nothing happens, you said two weeks to be cleaned up.
Yes, sir.
What happens in two weeks it's not cleaned up?
Well, I mean, that, that means there's an anomaly, you know, and again, hope is not a strategy, Mr. Baird, but I will tell you, again, I made the comment a while ago, if it's going to happen in this industry, it's going to happen in Campbell County Environmental Services. You know, I, I'm not saying that, you know, you, you might be, the reality of it is, let's say you inspire, make you get another director, well, you still could be in the same boat three months from now, if things don't go the way we planned things to go. You know, so, once we get that waste cleared, those compactors want to be able to maintain that residential waste. Now, we may have to look at some of that Class 4. Again, our plan was not to do away with our semis completely, we was going to put Class 4 on the wall and let them throw it into the, the actual semi trailer. Go down, pack it up, take one of those, man, you know, twice a week, you know what I'm saying? The majority of that residential household waste would have been put in those compactors. We have the trucks, we've been able to truck it out. We got the mover trucks, we've been able to truck it out no problem.
Now, now, the, you said you got a new wagon coming?
We do, yes, sir.
And it's a compactor wagon?
It is.
To haul another compactor?
Yes, sir.
And it would go on to the back of the truck that's hauling?
Yes, sir.
So, were those trucks, are they-
Set for it.
Are they set for it?
Now, we, we'll have to put wet lines on these trucks.
And how much does that cost?
It's, on, on the value of that, you're probably talking $25,000. You know, that'll come out of our maintenance side of it instead of from the wagon.
Okay. My last question, I promise.
You got four, sir?
I've gotten, within the last probably three to four weeks, I've had more phone calls, complaints about flat tires out there.
Absolutely.
Um, just dirty, and this is from people that usually don't complain.
I get it.
What am I supposed to tell them when they call me and say, you got to get it fixed out there, it's a mess?
I'll tell you this, Mr. Baird, you give me gravel to where they can pull up to the facility and stop it up into the road, I'll make sure that won't have flats.
Can you not, so the gravel's not your problem, you're, that's why you don't have flats? You can't run a magnet, you can't get, there's no downtime to run magnets or anything like that on the, on the roadway?
So if we run a magnet, you're not going to pick any of that up, and it covered in mud. It ain't going to suck it up out of that mud for nothing. So, the problem is, is that they're backing up. If the first dew or a little bit of sprinkle or a heavy rain starts coming down, they're dumping right, and we seen it at the end of the day-to-day. You know, they're not trying to even go to the transfer station, they're backing up as far as they, and I don't blame them at all. And they're dumping, and it's right there to the animal shelters entryway. You know, so, I, I mean, we'll be more than happy to, to run magnets and, and spread gravel, but we need it at our disposal. I, I'll tell you this, I've had a, a commissioner tell me to go buy gravel, and for the life of me, that don't make sense. The county owns a quarry. We should have it at our disposal.
I, I agree with that, but I also say, as a county, and county officials and county employees, we all need to try to get to, get along and, and everything, and that goes for everybody.
Agreed.
And I'm, I'm done.
Mr. Jackson, you up?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rutherford, I think all my questions that I have been answered, and I think a lot of these things can be dealt with in committee. All of these things, I believe, are fixable. We just need to try to sit down in committee and identify the things that are top priority and start fixing them one by one, and I think that we can make that work.
Yes, sir.
I don't really have anything else, just other than that, then I'm committed to helping. I'm like Mr. Baird, our duty now as elected officials and in Campbell County is to get along and not to be-
Absolutely.
-against each other or working against each department. So, I'm committed to that, and I'm committed to everything over that.
Mr. Chairman, finally, you know, I've spoken to Mr. Jackson before, he was even a commissioner. You know, he was trying to think outside the box then, you know, just to kind of give some help, because he recognized and saw it, so I want to commend you for it, I appreciate you. You know, I'm not saying that I'm an end-all, be-all, Mr. Baird, you, you know, you guys can be brutally honest, but there's certain things I don't, I don't feel like this body needs to be involved with. I don't, I don't need to know who I need to write up and who I don't. I, I know this, I recognize it. Again, those guys work hard, and those girls work hard, man. I'd put them up against any, any environmental services department in the state. The reality of it is, is there's certain things that I'm open to, but I think there are certain things, Mr. Chairman, that is really not up for discussion.
I think, like Mr. Jackson said, that can be taken to committee.
Yes, sir.
Zach, you up?
Zack, you up for? Go ahead, Zack.
Um, thank you, Mr. Rutherford, and thank you to your employees for the work you've all done. Um, again, some of these questions are gonna be repetitive, and I'm sorry for that. Um, so, your timeline, you said two to three weeks, is that, okay, okay. Um, deputy director is still, how long has that been vacant?
Eight months or so.
Okay. Um, I don't know who told you to wait till after the election, but that should not have happened. Um, frankly, no disrespect, sir, but I don't think we would be facing some of the situations that we are in now if we'd had one.
Yes, sir.
Um, and how many staff short?
Three drivers.
Okay. Um, and then, um, have I personally ever tried to micromanage you or hinder you?
No, and, and I tell ya, I, I'm, I'm the top folks that will, it, it'll come out, you know what I'm saying, I'm not trying to throw stones. Look, I recognize we have deficiencies. Uh, Zack, you know, I mean, you've asked for this and that, just like some of the other. That's not, that's not what I'm talking about, uh, so we're all on the same page.
Okay. Um, and another thing, and I was looking, I pulled the job description that's in your personnel file, um, and, and again, I don't, I, I don't care what's in them, but are you performing employee evaluations annually?
Well, I mean, as far as putting it down on paper, I can't tell you that we have recently.
Okay.
Uh, but yes, we do evaluate our people.
Okay. Um, just from, and again, uh, it's your department, and I respect your judgment, but, um, if it were me, I would be, um, from, from a performance management standpoint, um, that is something that needs to be done on a regular basis.
Yes, sir.
And, but I also understand that, um, right now, we are kind of in crisis mode.
Right. I, I'll, I'll put them up against anybody in, uh, any of our people.
I believe that answers my questions.
Just a second.
Mr. Shrock, do you have anything to say? Yeah, man. That concludes all commissioners' first round. Uh, I will give any commissioner a minute to make any comments they'd like to make. Mr. Kitz, I'm gonna shed your hand, Ray. You've got one minute, sir.
Bill, this, these people in this county, forty-two thousand, forty-four thousand people, have been waiting for this to transpire, for all this to be over with. You're giving, you're telling us, you, we know everything happens, you know, we can't help what happens, and, uh, you're telling this body here and these people, uh, that you're, you're saying it, it's gonna be two weeks.
I'm saying this, Mr. Kitz, our plan is in two weeks to have the darkness picked up.
Okay.
Now, that's not prohibiting nothing from coming in as well, see what I'm saying? So, uh, we've not restricted any cities, any businesses, we've still been able to receive whatever waste they have. Uh, we've got some people that's close to us, Mr. Willa Chan on them, calling, asking, "Hey, can we bring this"? Well, wait on, on Thursday and bring it to us. So, there's folks that, that's worked with us, and we've not turned anybody away. So, we're still receiving waste, and we're telling you our plan is in two weeks to have this cleared up.
No, just, I'll wait till she turns it over for you.
Twenty seconds, yes, sir.
Okay. That being said, say for an example, in two weeks, if things ain't transparented, I've checked about five to ten counties all over, and I can honestly tell you this for fact, that, and I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just being blunt. There's no county, uh, these, about thirty to forty miles and beyond, that is as worse as ours. Do, can, do you see that to be improved? Do you, do you, are you gonna make a difference in two to three weeks, point blank?
Yeah, Mr. Kitz, I'll tell you this, putting up Campbell County to other counties is comparing apples to oranges. Uh, you know, we're open seven days a week, we're able to dispose of refuse five days a week. Uh, we're the only ones in East Tennessee that way, that's open seven days a week. So, you can't compare, uh, we cannot dispose of refuse on Saturday and Sunday. You can't compare that to, to any others around the country.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Shrock, you, you're next. Is anybody else, anybody else?
Does anybody wanna make a motion before I say anything? Bill, uh, would it help us, and I don't know if we can do this or not, uh, Arson County, um, landfill, I can't think of the name, it's Ridge something.
Chestnut Ridge.
Chestnut Ridge.
Yes, I'm gonna tell it to Rob.
Could we, and I know it's more expensive, but it's a closer run for the trucks, and I know we could get more trucks sent in to us in a day.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that, there's possibility that you can, and you said you've reached out to him?
I have.
And will it violate our contract with Scott Solid Waste?
It will not, but there's still potential, uh, now, and you say, "Well, how's that even, uh, possible"? The only way, it won't violate our contract on serviceability, because our current contract does not have, uh, you know, Saturdays and Sundays included, uh, you know, so that might be a loophole, and again, that may be something, uh, you know, Mr. Coker to review, uh, and then I can reach out to, to our, our Waste Connections team up, you know, out as well, and try to figure that out. Uh, I don't think that they'll try to hold us to the fire on that. We have reached out to see if our landfill that we utilize will open on Saturdays to allow us, and they won't do it.
And I know it's a significant, a change in, in funding, which it's a significant change right now by having a contractor in place.
Yes.
You, you gonna make a motion?
I'm going to, if you'll let me.
I will.
I just, can I finish up?
Go finish.
Can you check into that, Bill?
I, I have.
'Cause, I mean, you're probably looking at it, it takes four hours to make a trip to Scott County and back, am I correct?
Three, three thirty is what we...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, point of order, one minute you said.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Point of order.
Just, just a second, please.
I wanna pull the commissioners for the point of order.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ward has asked that they vote be taken to see if he can continue or that we ask for him to make his motion.
Mr. Chairman, a question to you, please. You said a minute, that's what you said.
But he has, he has the right to vote.
What's fire is fire for one, for fire for all.
Yes, that's correct. Roll call, please. This is whether to end debate and ask for the motion, or to allow him to continue to speak, make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, it's a clarity, a yes vote means?
The yes vote means that you are allowing him to continue his... Roll call.
Yes.
Charles Bayer?
Yes.
Dwayne Bayer?
Yes.
Donnie Bruce?
Yes.
Michael Douglas?
Yes.
Wayne Gibson?
Yes.
Beverly Hall?
Yes.
Tyler King?
Yes.
Wayne Pitts?
Yes.
Scotty Kidd?
No.
Zachary Moran?
Has a totally yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Sue Danant?
Yes.
Rusty Orr?
Yes.
Derek Sharp?
Yes.
Scott Stansfield?
Yes.
Fourteen yes, one no.
Just four, you have four.
Time it took us to vote, I could've been done, but anyway, uh, the front-end loader, are we gonna put it back in service, or can we put it back in service? 'Cause I know it's a big, important part of the...
It is. Um, I, I reached out last week to Stowers, they got back to us at the end of last week, and, and told us that they will return, where we can pick up, they're not gonna pay for returning, but we can pick up our high lift in the same condition that it was received in.
And it's down?
Uh, well, it, it was off, well, it was movable, but there was an issue with the transmission on it, so I can't give you more detail.
If the transmission's out, it's a hundred grand, I mean, if it's out.
Yes, sir.
Uh, do we need another mechanic on night shift servicing our equipment?
I think that on the safety side of things, Mr. Ward, it's dangerous for one person to be working on trucks at night.
Well, it's, yeah.
Absolutely.
But I, I, and this is my feeling, I think that, that some, some thing, we, we're overwhelmed.
Right.
So, we're gonna have to do something to get our equipment back in service. I've worked different, I've worked in coal mines, Bill, I've worked in strip mines, I've worked around quitting my whole life. Sometimes you've gotta bite the bullet and do a night shift, get your things back running.
They're not opposed to, here, here's what I'll say, Mr. Ward, uh, again, our folks, man, have worked a buzzin'.
Oh, I agree, I agree.
You know, so, I, I just think the safety side of things, if I split...
I don't know who drives 207, I don't know if it's somebody drives it all the time, but, by Jordans, they drive. I don't know who it is, but, uh, I have a motion, Mr. Chairman, I, in light of all I've heard tonight, and what I've beat around the last, the last couple of weeks, and what I've seen come across in letters, the commission has been in charge of Bill for three years, the full commission, and I've always had, and I've always felt that I'm one fifteenth of the boss. But saying all that, I think I need to make a motion that we enact a three-member committee that's in charge of Bill. And my motion is to, and Joe, you may have to help me verbiage this, but, three-person sanitation committee to oversee Bill and take the, relieve us from our duty as the county commission, because it undoubtedly ain't working. Uh, and I, my motion is to put the mayor, the county commission chairman, and the sanitation chairman in charge of Bill, or the director, let's put it that way, and the director. Joe, am I correct? I've reached out to C-Tech and talked to them about this.
You have the statutory authority to do that, and I think they have to stagger terms, one year, two years, three years, if you choose to afford assistance.
I mean, we had one, in the way the statute set up, or was set up previously, the mayor made deployment, the commission ratified it, and the mayor could terminate at any given time, am I correct?
It's the way it was before.
It's the way it was before, and now the commission, if it come up to termination for any director, it would take eight votes, a majority vote of the commission. This way, these individuals, it would take two, it would take, instead of just having one person making that decision, you've got three people making that decision. That's my motion, Mr. Chairman, uh, do you want me to list who's one, two, and three terms?
You talking to me?
No, I'm talking to...
Well, you would, you can roll the terms, but, but they, they start out one year, two years, and three. But you, you could, when those terms come up to the end, then you can re-appoint the same person.
Okay.
But it, but they're staggered terms.
They're staggered terms. So, the mayor'd be on a three-year term, the county commission chairman would be on a two-year term, and the sanitation chairman would be on a one-year term. My motion is to enact that with that three-person committee, and they'll be in charge of the sanitation director.
Second, have a motion, uh, seconded by Stansfield. Joe, is everything perfectly done?
Yes, I, I assume you would want to include in that motion the statute...
The statute that's set across.
That enables that and sets out how it works.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to take anything away from sanitation committee, I've, I've never sat on the sanitation committee in a long time. I've come to these meetings, I've listened to sanitation committee, they've been, a lot of improvements been done. The blacktopping that was done was money that they come up with to get that done out there at Toe String, and that's in my district, and I'm appreciative.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, discussion on it?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, we can, yeah, we can.
Just, just real quick, I just got a real quick question.
Go ahead.
So, we, if we set up the, this committee, if there's any changes in the director, does it go back to the full commission, or is it done at that committee?
It's done at that level, am I correct, Joe? We'll be...
That's what we have been invited by C-Tech. The committee would be in charge of hiring and setting salary.
Of the director. Nobody else.
Just a second. Dwayne, you finished?
I'm done.
Hey, Scotty, then Zack.
Joe, um, that being said, you got the sanitation chairman, you have the chairman of the board, and you have the, the mayor, uh, all three, that's in charge of the sanitation, okay? Now, there's fifteen commissioners, we, we all work, you know, for the county, so is, is any of, is any of us allowed to, you know, check in on things and, and go out there and make sure things are running proper and everything? I mean, is that, is that still, I'm, I'm not talking just me, I'm talking about any commissioner. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
I guess the way I would describe it would be this, after consulting with the folks in Nashville, you may recall that, that the way you're doing it now was not the way they recommended it, because they said, you know, the commission's not set up to manage, to oversee, or supervise day-to-day activities of, of departments. They have told us that there is no prohibition between, uh, with commissioners being the ones that are appointed to serve on this kind of the board, uh, you can appoint other people, it doesn't have to be commissioners. It could be somebody that's not a commissioner that you can appoint to the board. They have these staggered terms. Would that mean that you as commissioners couldn't go out there and observe what was going on? No, you certainly can't, but you wouldn't have any authority, whatever, you know, to try to direct what was being done.
Exactly.
You know, that's the duty of the director. It's never really been the duty of the commission to do that. Those are the duties of the director to run the department. So, uh, does that answer your question?
Well, the question, a little bit, I wanna be a little bit more specific, and I know you're, you're an attorney and I'm a junk man, but that's okay. Um, what a question I'm gonna have for you is, I'm gonna be a little bit more specific, so, if Mr. Jones calls me and says, "Look, Scotty, I've got a problem such and such", do, do I, do I, as a commissioner, try to handle that and contact Bill and work with him to try to resolve that issue? Do I call, uh, the sanitation director, since these three people are in charge? 'Cause these people in here know exactly where, what I'm talking about, 'cause I'm basically right with their level. So, do we go back to the chairman of the, uh, the sanitation, the chairman of the board, or the, the mayor? So, 'cause he's, the mayor's gonna get all the calls too, so, can you explain a little bit of that? It shouldn't be that hard, Joe.
If you're, if you're going to empower this three-man board, then I would think that, that the logical way would be to contact that three-person board and let those people communicate with him, because if you don't, you're gonna be in the same situation as you're in now.
So, be fair enough to put, just say, tell Mr. Jones to go ahead and call the mayor's office.
Well, she could do, yes, she could do that, but, but if you're gonna try to, to, to solve a problem here that you've got too many people...
Right.
Trying to say what to do, then you've got three people, so they would need to contact those three.
Any of the three.
Yes. And if you have a person you know that, uh, that calls you, there would be nothing wrong with you talking to one of the three, you know, you certainly can, but, but he would be the director, or whoever would be the director, that the board would pick, and, you know, you're not trying to micromanage what's going on.
Exactly.
That's the duty of the director.
So, you got three, and that's all we need.
That would be what, if this motion passed...
Right.
That's the way it would work as opposed to...
I, I think that's Mr. Rea- uh, that's reasonable, Mr. Coker, thank you.
Mr. Shrock?
Yes, sir.
Zack, you up for?
Before I start my time, I have a point for you. The motion on the floor does not comply with, uh, Rule sixteen of the commission rules.
And read that, please.
The following are examples of items which should generally be presented to the appropriate committee of the county commission prior to such item being presented to the county commission for their consideration, and on that list is items that would establish a new policy or procedure.
You're saying...
Mr. Chairman, we couldn't hear him over here.
Okay. My point of order is...
You got a microphone?
Hey, Zack, could you speak that...
Please, do, we, I can hear what you're saying, so.
Um, do you want me to restart it?
Restart, please.
Uh, my point of order is that the motion on the floor does not comply with, uh, Rule sixteen of the commission rules, um, which states that the following are examples of items which should generally be presented to the appropriate committee of the county commission prior to such item being presented to the county commission for their consideration, um, and that is, and on that list is items that would establish a new policy or procedure. I'm of the opinion that this requires, this needs to go before the sanitation committee.
Mr. Chairman. If that's the case, then this meeting, we've had tonight, it went before the sanitation committee before we even came in here.
Yes.
Uh, and I think that, that rule, and Joe can correct me, this special call meeting to handle the problems at, at, at bay...
I don't see this as being a procedural process.
Okay.
The mission has the authority...
I mean, if the commission wants to do that, vote it down.
Zack, you have the right.
My thing is, I, I know, I believe I know the section you're talking about, I've read it before. That impression I got from it was that county commissioners or county officials cannot serve on it, was the way I understood the statute. I would much rather have something in paper form before I vote to approve it tonight. And with that, um, I make a motion to table.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Just a second, you can't take it no more? We have a motion to table, motion, Marlowe, seconded by Kitz, we'll be voting to table. Uh, just a second. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, in Nashville, did they not tell us that he had to state a date that we would, uh, bring...
Yes, they did.
The table back?
Yeah, they did.
A motion to table until the regular commission meeting on September nineteenth.
Okay, motion to table until the regular commission meeting on September nineteenth. Mr. Kitz, are you good with that?
That is fine, thank you.
Okay. You're voting on the table. If you vote yes, it's tabled, if you vote no, then it's not tabled, and we'll vote on the motion that's on the floor. Roll call, please.
Wait a minute, say it one more time?
If you vote yes, you're voting for the table, which means it will be brought back up to nineteenth. If you vote no, then you're voting to let the motion stand, and we vote on the motion.
Okay.
As, as presented.
Mr. Chairman, in all respect, I'm telling you now, this is what I got this thing for. Respectfully to the media and the public and the commissioners, I'm just gonna ask, talking to you.
Scotty, I understand what you're...
They really couldn't understand exactly, if you could pull the mic a little closer, unless you can explain it.
I'll, 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 I'll have everyone bring the, get the mics closer.
No, no, about what he was talking about.
Okay, we're voting on the table, you know?
No, what he was, okay.
Voting on the table, please roll call.
No.
Charles Bayer?
No.
Dwayne Bayer?
No.
Donnie Bruce?
No.
Michael Douglas?
No.
Wayne Gibson?
No.
Beverly Hall?
No.
Tyler King?
No.
Wayne Pitts?
No.
Scotty Kidd?
Yes.
Zack, Marlon?
Yes.
Sue Danant?
No.
Rusty Orr?
No.
Derek Sharp?
No.
Scott Stansfield?
No.
Fourteen no, ten yes.
The table fails, the motion stands as presented. Uh, Mr. Marlowe, you still have the floor, so...
I would like to see the statute on paper before I vote. No, and frankly, I'd like to see it in writing, too. And, um...
And, for so much, we realize that also, for so much, that for the vote on it, that it has to reduce to batting a million votes to qualify. Again, I'm not, I'm not against that idea, but so many times we've done it, and halfway done it, and that's just not a good way to do this.
Understood, understood. Greg, could you read the motion, please?
Motion was to enact a three-person committee to oversee the director of sanitation, the mayor, what, had what time?
Three years.
Three, chairman of the commission had two, and then the sanitation chairman had one.
Is that correct, Mr. Morlow?
And that's the one that's in charge of the director of sanitation?
And that would be the three that are in charge?
Did you say that the statute needs to be in there?
You're Stanfield, is, is that correct in that motion?
What section can sit down in this hearing?
That would need to be a part of the motion, Mr. Chairman, I, I've sent that to you. I don't have it right here in front of me, but there's only one statute that, that deals with it.
Could you provide that for us?
I will, yes. You're going to need, if, if this passes tonight, you know, you're still going to need a more defining resolution that's going to formally establish, you know, what you're, what you would be doing here, saying, yes, we want to move forward with this.
And what you're saying, and then on, that means we can have that information provided to all commissioners.
So, if we vote on this tonight, is it going to affect tonight, or is it going to affect once we pass that resolution?
Well, it will go into effect when you pass the resolution, but, you know, it would, it would have more specific details.
Because I'm not, in case you all haven't heard out my mail, I'm not big on certified motions, I would rather have that resolution through.
If I'm, if I'm correct, Joe, that anything that we do here is not official until the county commission passes it in the, after the meeting, is that correct?
No, I think theoretically you can do this tonight.
Okay.
You want to say that that's what you want to do, and this is the statute, one year, you know.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Hold it just a second.
You have the statute, but I don't, I don't have a copy out of it in front of me.
Okay. We have a motion and second on the floor, Scotty, just a second. I'm not going to let anyone, so I'm going to let Bill make his comments, and then we're going to vote.
Is our department the only department of this three-person board, or is the other departments going to have that same setup?
This statute is specific to a sanitation department.
Mr. Chairman, and that's specific, yeah, that's specific to you, Bill, not to your department.
Okay.
Because they can't tell your employees what to do.
Sure.
Just like the commission could.
If you vote yes, you'll be voting to pass this?
Mr. Chairman, if, Mr. Chairman, and, and since I'm the maker of the motion, if this is going to cross-thread this to a complete mess, I'll hold it till next week and put it on the agenda, that's going to give two weeks, Joe can get the stuff together. I know, I know how Zach's saying, but this commission has, has suspended the rules every time I've been here, now sixteen years, and past things. And there's an option, there's a state law that's just, perform that duty, but to say all that, I'll hold off and drop my motion till we come back in here Monday night in our regular commission workshop and bring it back to the table. Now, if you don't want to, if all fifteen of you just want to continue being the supervisor, fine.
Mr. Stanfield, are you good with dropping it till next week?
Is that what you're, so we're both voting to that?
It's got to the point that everybody down here is, wants to do something, and then when they come in here, they don't want to do nothing. And, and I'm not trying to, trying to be smart with you, Zach, there's a rule, there's an exception of everything we do down here. And I didn't bring this to nobody's table, because it was a special call meeting, I didn't have time to present it, that's where it's at. But I pulled it, we'll come in here Monday night in the workshop, and I'm putting it back on the agenda, and Joe can have all the specifics ready, and I'm sorry, I can't find it on my phone, but we'll have it Monday night, so everybody can.
Directly to you.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a problem with Rusty's or Commissioner Marlow's either way with you guys, I respect you guys, but do, I do have a problem is, and I'm saying this, I hope you take this in a compassionate way, Zach, I need to hear what you're saying in the mic, because that way everybody will know what we're talking about. I'm for the three guys, believe me, I'm for that, but I've got to understand and respectfully